Good evening and welcome to the Milford School Committee meeting of March seventeenth. There are tonight's meetings being broadcast through Milford TV and there are other members of the media in attendance. If anyone would like to make a video or audio recording of this meeting, please let me know or any other member. Good evening. Happy St. Patrick's Day to everybody. First agenda item is approval of the minutes. Everybody had an opportunity to read the minutes. And most of them Scott, second by John, all in favor? Unanimous. Next agenda item is announcements, correspondence and distributions. I would like to start that with, tonight is Patrick's last meeting as a six-year member of the Milford School Committee. Thank you, of course, is in order. I'd like to open it up to board members, anybody would like to make some comments, that would be great. We have a little something for you. Scott?
So first off, thank you and congratulations on your, on your six, six years of service here and certainly thank you from, from a fellow board member. You, you helped bring, when I first came on, you were actually the chair when my, my first year helped me as I got involved in this and as we can all probably attest to, that first year being on the school committee is, you rely on the chair a lot and you rely on the other members. It's definitely drinking from the fire hydrant when you first join, so I want to thank you for that. From a school committee member's perspective, obviously you've been a lifelong friend of mine and, you know, it's been a pleasure to be able to serve on the board with you and certainly wish you nothing but the best. It's been a pleasure to work with you and see your family grow during your six years here, from I think zero children to three during these six years, but we'll certainly miss you on the board here and certainly best of luck to you in your upcoming election.
Thank you. Jen?
Well, I also have learned a lot from you and still being one of the newer members, I have definitely looked to you kind of for that confidence that you bring and that knowledge you bring, that unique perspective of the law and all of the, just the way you look at things has been really, I really learned a lot from that and I know there were times when I kind of sit back and go, oh, Patrick will say something, this is going to be good. And it's really, you've had great leadership on this committee and I truly believe that your heart has always been in exactly the right place, which is moving our district forward and moving students forward and I really think you'll be missed on the committee and I really wish you the best and whatever your next chapter may bring.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Yeah, I'll just echo Jen's comments, you know, you've certainly been one of the more vocal members of this committee and definitely one of the, one of the more passionate advocates for our schools and for our students and as a member of this committee and as a taxpayer and a parent of a child in the school system, I definitely appreciate that, so thank you for, for your dedicated service over the last six years.
Thanks, Joe. John?
Yeah, Patrick, I'd like to thank you as a resident and taxpayer for six years of dedicated service and hard work and I just offer in the last year that I've been here, nearly a year, it's been a pleasure to work with you. I can't believe how, how quickly a year goes by, but, you know, the amount of involvement I've had with you has been, you know, has really helped me develop as a member and, and I appreciate everything you've, you've contributed.
Thank you, John, thank you.
Patrick, if I may, Patrick, I just want to thank you also for the last six years of being on the, at the table with you as a member, but also to your family, Alyssa who's here tonight, you know, who's, you know, obviously a tremendous educator in the Milford Schools, your, your young family who, there's a lot of nights that you're away from all of them and I know as a father to how, how difficult that can be, but school building committee meetings, I don't need to remind you of these, but I'll remind the public of the policy subcommittee meetings, school committee meetings, executive session meetings and the number of things that you're out attending that are school events to have, whether it's Special Olympics or concerts or whatever it may be to support the schools and, and you do this as my other members do voluntarily and that time is appreciated. I know the administrative team appreciates your presence in our schools and want to say thank you on behalf of the administrative team in the Milford Schools for your service to the town and the support of the school department.
Patrick, if I may, what I've admired about you over six years is your professionalism, your knowledge, you know, you always attacked a problem, you always knew what you were talking about, you always carried yourself very, very professionally no matter where we were. I see you out in the public as well and you do the same. Again, you know, as every member has said, thank you, you know, having been here seven years and not with a young family, I understand the commitment and, and you did a great job for us and I greatly appreciate that. As a taxpayer in the town of Milford, I want to say thank you to you as well. Everybody that's left since I've been on, I always said, we're sending you home to your family. We may not be sending you home to your family, so again, good luck on your election and thank you for everything you've done. We have a little gift for you and Alyssa, if you would be kind enough to come up. So on behalf of the Milford School Committee and in the Milford Public Schools, we would like to say thank you for your service and good luck to you and your family and much like to your new child.
Thank you very much.
You guys should be very proud of your daddy. How about we give him a round of applause?
Those are, those are all very, very kind words and I can't, I can't thank you enough for, for saying them. I, I'd like to thank actually first and foremost my, my wife Alyssa. I kind of surprised her when I came home in twenty-ten and told her that I was going to run for school committee and she's really, she's, she's born with me ever since, you know, in the, in the time that I've been on the committee, we've had three children, you know, so we've raised three babies and she's just been the rock of our family, she's always been the rock of our family, she's the one that holds it all together, so, you know, without her, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be anything.
Maybe you haven't been away from home that long at all.
It's just, it's, it's been such a pleasure and it's been, I just really enjoyed my time on this committee and I thank the people of Milford for allowing me to sit here, you know, I, I think that, you know, we, we serve on their behalf and we serve for their benefit. I'm just, I'm very appreciative and I'm very humbled for all your kind words and I know the committee's going to move forward and it's going to be great and you're going to continue moving the Milford Schools forward in the way that we have been and just thank you, thank you all very much.
Thank you, thank you. Joe? Any other member have some announcements, correspondence?
Bye, kids.
Take care.
Bye, buddy.
All right, with that, we'll move on to the next agenda, invitation to speak, is anybody here, invitation to speak? Okay, with that, we're going to pass over the Milford High School Liaison because Dr. McIntyre informed me, we do not have a student tonight. Next agenda item is Middle School East reuse. Open that up for discussion.
Yeah, and so we, we thought it may be worth having a discussion, starting a dialogue around Middle School East. I know Scott and Bob have been serving on the Middle School East reuse committee and there's a lot of, a lot of good work that's being done by that committee currently and my understanding is that they'll have a final report to us sometime over the course of the next month or two before town meeting. And I think what, at least from my perspective, what I wanted to discuss with the committee is if, if we feel comfortable and confident that we've evaluated all the potential educational uses of that, not just that building, but of the space that we could potentially free up at other buildings by moving certain groups over to Middle School East. And I don't feel that we've done that level of analysis yet and at some point we're going to have to just declare this building a surplus and we do that, I think as a committee we feel confident that we're making the right decision and that giving up that building is in the best interest of the schools long-term.
Mr. Chairman, John?
No, go ahead, Scott. What I was going to say is, you know, I, I think those are, that's a good point, Joe. A piece of what the Middle School East reuse committee is doing and realize that included within the scope of the work is, and part of that is, is if we were to, in fact, there were actually interviews done with members of our administration, obviously the superintendent of schools is inclusive of that as well as Lenny Markone and what are their needs and that was part of the input that's going into this extremely comprehensive report that's going to be coming out. We're anticipating final results from that at our April meeting, which is in a couple of weeks and then the final, the final presentation ideally being done in our May meeting, which is right before town meeting. But part of that actually is with this consultant coming and actually looking at what the needs are of the town inclusive of the schools and, and part of that would come back and say, okay, so if you wanted to keep it for, as an example, administrative use, so as you said, not just for classroom use, so not for using it as it's currently used for educational purposes, but what would be the additional component? That's part of the scope of this work as well and what would the, what would the needs be from a town perspective, town being inclusive of the schools? And also what is the, what would be the cost, if any, that's associated with that? So that's actually part of what you're, I think you're looking for is actually inclusive in the scope of work that's being done by the Middle School East reuse committee.
So when you say that, so let's say administrative use, right? So hypothetically speaking, let's say we moved central office over and community use over, we move over a couple of the groups, whether it's facilities or family network, family resource center, they're going to sit down with, with Carrie and have a conversation with her to say, okay, now that we've freed up all this space, what potential programs or what do you envision doing with the space you have at the high school?
No, so they're going to look at if we wanted to move over, as an example, community use, central office, if that were the part of it, so they're going to come back and say, so what are the potential needs that you have for moving things like central office and community use? Great, if you wanted to use it for administrative offices, here are the costs that go along with converting, with moving that building to an administrative office building and here's the scope of work that's included with that. From our perspective, it would then be up to us and no, would not be included in their scope of work of, great, so what would we need to do to then convert the other offices and what would we do with the space that comes in there?
And that's a piece that I think we, at least from my perspective, I'd like to explore is, so if we, if we have the ability to move some of these groups over and we free up all this space in the district, how could that benefit us? Like what are the programs, what are the services that we could offer in that space?
Yeah, I, I think just from that perspective and I'll, I'll give my two cents on that, I would, I think it would be, I think it's too far in advance before we have the information from knowing what the feasibility is of potentially using that space for administrative use to be able to do that, simply because it may be cost prohibitive to move and turn that into administrative building. It may be a cost prohibitive piece, in fact, some of the early information that was coming back from the report from the consultant was that the costs to be able to turn that into an administrative building is not in insignificant number, it's in the millions at the, at the first pass. So there may be a cost prohibitiveness that goes along with that, it's more of a, it's, it's great if we were able to free that space up, I think that is a good conversation to have. I think it's too premature until we know if that's even a feasibility from a study for, that even if it's a possibility to even have that space available to us, which we're going to know in a matter of weeks. In a matter of weeks, we'll be able to have a better understanding of that and then I think it's a very, I think it's a very important conversation that we have. I just don't know if the timing is, I, I wouldn't necessarily think that that's, the timing, I think, is too premature because we won't know what's available to us yet.
John?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. When I look at this process, I understand that the Middle School East reuse committee was put, put in place to decide the best use if or when we declare this, that building surplus. As a committee member, I don't think that we've done an exhaustive analysis of what benefits keep, to, there are to keeping that school, what we could use it for, like Scott and, and Joe just mentioned, could we move some, some departments over there, central office, family resource, community use and what does that allow us to do with programming here? And I think we need to have in-depth conversations with the administrators, the principal of, of at least this building, possibly the principals of other buildings to see what we can add for programming, what freeing up the space would do. I mean, we know there's a space challenge here at the high school, we have, we have classes in the chair room, we have testing in rooms that were designed to be storage rooms, but in addition, you know, right now, I don't think we have the space capacity to add programs. We can, we can drop and add, but we can't extend our program and we need to look at it long-term, what could this do for school choice? What, I mean, that's a big picture and that's years down the road, but what, you know, where do we want to go with our, with our programming, with our offerings here? We need to look at, I think Patrick was probably the first to mention this, you know, the long-range educational plan is, is effectively complete, maybe some components not addressed, but what's the next twenty-year plan? What, what is this building going to need? If this building needs renovations or repairs, what are we going to do for space? I, I think it's a much bigger picture than, than we're looking at now and I think, I mean, I have, I have a lot more thoughts, but I think we need to really analyze this as a committee, possibly form a subcommittee to, to, to consider this in the big picture, not just today's picture, but in today's picture, what can we do? We don't want to make the decision of making too quick of a decision. So do we want to possibly move some, free up a little space and move somebody there? Do we want to look at leasing a portion of the building and offsetting the operational costs? There's just so many, do we want to, do we want to expand community use, do we want to look at expanding community use to offer more to the community? And we want to look at it from a community perspective, what, what benefits are there? And there's so many, if we did move some of the, the departments over there, family resource center, central office, community use, transportation, it's, it's right next to the town hall. There's a lot of people that struggle with when they come here and talking to Lenny Markone, for example, what, you know, he tells them, okay, you have to go get a residency card, but where's that? Town hall, he gives them directions, you know, the convenience of, of some of the residents has to be considered. I, I think there's just so much that we, we need to move forward in, in a very methodical method and look at all of these considerations. So I, I'd like to see this committee do that, possibly form a subcommittee, that's where I, that's where I stand and I have so much more, so many more thoughts, but that's the essence of, of what I'm thinking at this point.
So you would like to see a committee formed for the use, that the school department would have use of the building for?
I would.
Any other member? Jen?
I agree with some of the things that you just mentioned, John, and, you know, I also have been thinking about the school choice discussions and it seems like every meeting we go to now that has anything to do with money and financing and how the school department operates, it, we're hearing all the time, why are kids leaving, why are kids leaving? The only way we're going to, in some ways, break that perception is by not being able to just say, we have what we have and we're stuck with this, but by growing programs and you've already begun to grow programs, there are many more, there are many more things that we could be adding to support our students and keep them from going from BBT and keep them from looking elsewhere and, you know, you've, you've already got a preschool in this building, you've got central office in the building, that's a lot of space that we're taking from the original intent of this building, which is to service our grades nine through twelve students. Never mind special education, maybe there's special programming in that area where we'd like to keep more kids in-house and maybe even supplement some of the programs that we have, which, which we just can't do with the number of other offices and things that are housed in here. I also agree that I don't think we have enough information at this point, you know, with full respect for all that the Middle School reuse committee has been doing and I think you have to go through all those steps and understanding the cost and all the ADA compliance issues, I absolutely would like more information on what the school department could do with extra space. And the other thing is, I'm not sure that I feel comfortable being one of a group of seven saying, yep, we're all done with this building or no, we're not all done with this building. I think we asked a long time ago for some input, either from the selectmen or from the FINCOM and kind of the way that things progressed, we, a committee was formed and I completely understand the progression, but I think we're at the point where we really need to have some collaboration amongst people who are really running the town of Milford. So when we make a decision on what's going to happen, it's not that seven elected members said, yep, we're going to do this, it's that collectively we all have decided this is what's best for the town of Milford overall and that we all have that opportunity to talk together and understand everyone else's perspective. So whether it be that we start with a subcommittee and we really fully understand the needs of the district, so we know what we could do, I'm not exactly sure what you could do with the central office at, as it is right now, it's office space. What, what would that look like? Would that look like more construction in this building or knocking down walls and what cost would be associated with that? So I would like to see a way that, that we bring a lot of people together and consider what your committee has been doing and consider all other ramifications and the costs and then kind of make a fully informed decision.
So I, I think they're, they're valid points, I mean, I think a couple of things. So what you're proposing, Jen, is having not just the school committee member, but committees from all throughout town going to come together, representatives of those committees to kind of talk about what is the best use. So the Middle School East reuse committee is that group. So there's representative from the school committee, from the finance committee, from the zoning board, from the fin, from the superintendent of schools, from the board of selectmen, it's actually the combination of virtually, with the exception of probably the building committee and the, the, forgive me, the sewer commission and the parks with the, with the exclusion of those three committees, it's virtually every committee in town that actually has representation, including community members that are actually part of that. So I think what you're proposing is actually, that's actually what the Middle School East reuse committee is. It's actually representatives of all the boards coming together to talk about what is the highest and best use and what came from that was the hiring of a consultant that says, hey, we've all kind of got different ideas, let's find out from a feasibility perspective what's out there and that's what that committee was charged with is, what is the highest and best use of that building? What's the cost that goes along with that? What are the, what are the zones? What's the zoning look like? What's the, what's the, what are the needs, as I mentioned, Lenny Markone from community use? He's on there and has a voice and part of his job in being representative on that board is to bring in, eh, there are needs that come from, that we would have of this, of this building for community use in order to grow and that's why he's on that committee is to be there to be, to represent that. Bob is on that committee as well as myself to represent the schools, to talk about if there was a need from central office, if there's a need from the school's perspective, to bring that forward to the committee as well as I'm not there to speak for representing my voice, I'm there as a representative of this board's voice. So I, I think it's, I think it's a valid point, I think it's, you know, I've talked to Bob on a number of occasions, we've done updates on this at every, virtually every meeting for the last thirteen months or so. It's actually the body of work that this committee has been going through is bringing this forward. The voices are there. What I would say is, is if, if those voices are, have changed from this board, so just for those, because I know we've got a, a number of newer folks, the long-range educational plan has been, as a result of the Woodland project, required a vote every year since its inception. In order to get to this point with Woodland, we actually as a committee, now this board has changed dramatically, as you would expect, as it happens every April and it's going to happen again in a couple of weeks. This committee actually had, had to vote, as did the board of selectmen and actually had to sign our letter of intent that was prepared by the superintendent of schools. Inclusive with that was the long-range educational plan, which laid out saying that the middle school, part of that process was that Middle School East would be declared surplus. Any vote that we take at any point up through and including tonight, if we were, if that vote were to come through that says we, either we do want to declare it surplus or we don't want to declare it surplus, is actually not binding until such time that it actually, the building becomes surplus and it actually gets turned over. It was actually a request that came through at a very early meeting of the Middle School East reuse committee and they said, go back to your board and make sure you want to, make sure you want to declare this building surplus. It happened to have been at a meeting, it was the Wednesday, it was actually at a meeting the day after we had just re-voted on our letter of intent and reaffirmed at that time the long-range educational plan, which included the reuse, that Middle School East was going to be turned over to the town and declared surplus. So can we do that? Absolutely, and I said, I, I'm happy to bring that back, this was approximately eighteen, thirteen, eighteen months ago. I said, I'm happy to bring that back, I said, and understand that when we vote on it, it's good up until the moment that we take that vote and then it can be overturned with the next changing of the board. It can be overturned at the next meeting because until such time that that building is either declared surplus or is not declared surplus, but until at such time that it, it no longer becomes an educational building, the vote can change. This committee has changed multiple times since. If there is a change in voice of the committee, again, I'm, I'm here not to invoke my opinions upon that, I'm, I'm, but only to the extent that I'm one of seven members. So if there is a change and you would like for me to bring those things back to the, to the Middle School East reuse committee and we'd like to change that, I can certainly, I'm certainly happy to do that. I would expect as a, as a committee member of the Middle School East reuse committee member, as well as as a member of the, of this board, that if there was a need, and it's a question I've asked Bob directly during meetings and of the superintendent of schools, if there is a, if there is a need for use of that building, that that be vocalized and that be brought forth. I asked about educational use, I asked about need from that perspective, Bob has affirmed to me in multiple times, it's a wish list night, it's a wish list item. If we could, if, if things aligned and we could move central office off, there's mixed feelings on that, could we do that? Would it be great if we do that? Yes. Is there a need for it? The answer that Bob gave, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, Bob, but the words you gave, the words, your, your response at that meeting as well as during meetings in the past that we've all been at, has been, there is not a need for it. Is there a want for it? Absolutely, but I want to make sure we design between need and want. And is there a cost that goes along with that? Are there great things that we could do along with that? Yes, understanding the financial ramifications of being able to do such a thing, there are components that go along with that, as I mentioned. So I want to make sure that everybody, I'm not trying to influence one way or the other, I want to make sure we're all on the same page in the understanding of what the body of work of this committee has been. Some of the requests that are coming, that are being made are actually exactly what this committee has been working on for in excess of a year right now. In addition to if there's a change in the feelings of the committee, that we want to do that, again, I defer to the superintendent of schools with his request and I, Bob, I'm going to ask you, has this changed? Is there a need?
Yeah, no, let me, I'll, I'll be happy to comment on that. I think you characterized it well. I think it's, it's, I look at it a bit differently in that what, what's been proposed of, from John, is to looking at a, a subcommittee to look at the possibility and I, we kind of review it as, as an opportunity. Is there an opportunity with Middle School East for the Milford Schools to move us in a different direction or to expand programming? Absolutely there is. That's different than are we somehow doing business in a way that's compromised by letting that building go? And I would say no, because we, I mean, as much as we don't like to have all of our, call them ancillary offices as part of Milford High School, it's a number of challenges for us, but is it a cost that the school department wants to bear? Is it, is it an article the school department wants to put forward for capital improvement? So much that we have such a demand for that space that we're willing to, to argue at town meeting for millions of dollars for renovations. I, from where I sit right now at this point in time, don't see that. I'm not aware, there's been discussions about expanding vocational programs, which I think is, is a way for us to, to move, as Kevin will present in a short while this evening about early college and opportunities to maybe look at academy models for our school district, there's some real innovation ideas and that's where we get to, there's not a need, but there's an opportunity. And so I think the two, and to Jen's point as well, in the spirit of what I think this Middle School East group came together to do is really what I'm after and maybe it's too ideal, but in my mind's eye, if the whole town, the finance committee, board of selectmen and all those representative groups that you mentioned, Scott, come together and say, you know what, we feel that, that this best represents the town of Milford, the future of Milford, it's a property on Main Street, we have some kind of control over what goes there, so we're not going to sell it off to someone, whatever may happen to that building, there's a pride there, there's a proximity, as mentioned before about the family resource center, going to the town hall for residency cards or any number of things that we do in town, there's a lot of practical reasons to keep it that are separate from the costs which we have to bear, but if the whole town, we're on board with that and you have the finance committee saying, we think this is important to the school department, we think it's important for our town and if the selectmen felt the same way in the school committee, I think that's the piece that you're getting at, Jen, where we have this sort of unification of everybody being on the same page and supporting it. And maybe the next step is, well, and simultaneously, if the committee wants to move that way, well, we know the Middle School East, the Cecil report will come out with, and we have given to the Cecil group, Steve Cecil, the square footages for all the, and again, I call them ancillary offices that are existing in Milford High School, excluding the preschool space, we have those square footages, so that will be factored into, you know, moving that office space, he has that information, that's been, that's been produced. But to move it to the next level of conversation and I would encourage that discussion to happen, you know, with Kevin and with Carrie in particular, as to what are the opportunities? What is it we'd like to see grow in the future and then now bring that to the table as well? So when there comes a time the school committee is fully informed to, to that, at that point, say, okay, we know we're ready to move into Woodland School, we're now ready to make a move on this and we, we feel like we're fully informed. I think both of those things are, are really important, so I'd be happy to sit on that, I really think it's more of a forward look, so I'd be happy to sit on that, to add some perspective, but to drive, have Kevin drive that now for the next level. That's the one thing we have not done, we've not, we've had some initial, I look, I'm looking at Carrie, we've had some initial discussions about- We've not, we've had some initial, I look, I'm looking at Carrie, we've had some initial discussions about that, uh, but nothing that's, that's formalized enough for us to say, we really need that space, we want to put forward this program, and we have a Chapter seventy-four application ready to go. We're not at that point on any of our, of our ideas. But that's my comment, uh, to follow up on your, on your report.
John?
Yeah, I think, you know, I'm not sitting here arguing that we need Middle School East yet. What I'm here saying is, we haven't explored what the benefits of, of maintaining that building can be. And I don't, I think more work needs to be done, more, we need to get members of the school system, naturally the principals, um, or, or primarily the principals, and see what we want to do or what we could do with programming. You know, a lot of things have changed. The Long Range Educational Plan was, was, I guess it started in the mid-nineties. It was sort of reorganized, I guess, in the early two thousands. You know, for example, it called for Woodland to be open in stores in two thousand and eight. We're, we're eight years later. So there's a lot of things that have changed. It called for, uh, if, if the new Woodland was constructed at the site of the old Woodland, to renovate the, the, um, Early Childhood Center, which hasn't been discussed. So maybe this is all part of that discussion. There's a lot of moving, there's a lot of moving pieces. You know, five years ago, we were, we were more or less break even on school choice. Now, you know, we all know we're, we're very much in the red. What, you know, this, what are the possibilities? What are the opportunities is what I want to explore. And I'm not, not sitting here saying, um, that I'm advocating that we keep East yet. I don't have enough information to, to vote the opposite at this point. So, uh, I, I think we may even be a little behind on the timeline, but I think we should, I think we should explore it as a committee, as a district, in more depth. That's, that's where I stand right now.
Joe?
Yeah, no, I, I, I agree. The, the key word there is, is information. I don't think anyone's at a, at a point right now where we want to make any decision one way or another. And I completely agree with Jen and, and with you, Scott, in that the committee that's already formed is a collaborative committee, right? So let's give you all the information so that we can look at the bigger picture, make a decision that's going to be in the best interest of the commu- the community as a whole. And, and it just doesn't feel that we, we're, we've shared that information with you guys up until this point. So I think forming that type of committee would be beneficial.
My, my, my only ask on that would be, and I appreciate that. I, I think, uh, one of the things that definitely needs to be very heavily weighed out along with that, um, is the cost. And the cost, I would tell you, um, I, I think a big piece of why, at least when this initially came up, because it was a conversation that happened at the time, um, and I'm not, I think you may have just been on the board, Joe, I'm not sure, um, was that some of the things that were, we were kind of taking a look at as potential, sort of the, what could we possibly do? What is the sort of, what's the what-if scenario and some of the curriculum, some of the things that we talked about? The discussion at the time was that it was cost, that it was a cost prohibitive process to spend the time on. Not that spending the time was not valuable, spending the time is exceptionally valuable. It was, if we were wanting to do that, what's the additional incremental cost that would go along with that? And the potential impact of that? The view was at the time, with the new building coming onboard, with the additional cost that would go along with that, if we were to try and maintain East and turn, and turn that, and ma- yeah, they maintained it as an educational building, or looking to possibly move administrative offices over to, we did not know what the costs were with that. But just the operating costs of the building, um, on top of the, the operating cost of the actual physical structure itself, in addition to possibly the additional staff that would need to be done either to maintain that as an educational building. That was the initial conversation was, do we keep that as a building? Do we use it as a vocational school? Do we use it for some of the programs that we talked about and just keep it for its intent? That it becomes potentially cost prohibitive, just with the cost of running the building, maintaining the additional staff that would go along with that? Because it would be, it would be an incremental lift in the number of people that we have working for. Because it's not that we could keep the exact same staff and be able to maintain the same building, because we're moving that eighth grade personnel into Mills, into Stacy Middle School. So, um, I, again, I, I, I think it's valuable to have that conversation. And it's, and I'm not saying one way or the other, I'm just, just more information for the committee of the reason why, to your point, John, we may feel like we're a little bit behind on it. And part of that was is, a lot of these discussions did happen, at least initially. And again, initially being, you know, a couple of years ago, um, when we first went through this whole, when we first went through the Woodland process, um, which is, believe it or not, about two years ago now. So you may have been on for about a year, Joe, at that time. So some of these conversations, I want to make sure for the benefit of the public, as well as for the other members that may not have been present at the time, um, these conversations did happen at the time. And that was the reason why there was not additional investigation that was done at the time.
Joe?
Uh, the one thing that, you know, I guess I just want to go back to is what I see as the importance of, eventually, when we get to this point, um, having full representation from this committee. And in many cases, I think it's fine to have a representative. Somebody comes and they represent our body and we give our feedback. But given some of the comments that we've heard at some of our most recent meetings, such as, "School Committee, if you want to keep this building, go right ahead and keep it, but it's going to come out of your operating budget." Those are comments that we have heard. And I don't want to see us getting to a position where this board says one thing through one voice, and another board through one voice says something else, and another board through one voice says something else. I really feel like, given the size of this building, the, the value of the building, the location of the building in terms of Main Street, the heart of Milford, um, I, I would not want to move forward without knowing that we've all had an opportunity, or at least that we have requested as a school committee, that we get everyone together, the, the full Finance Committee, all three Selectmen, the Town Administrator, so we can all fully understand and hear all of the pieces. It's great to, to be representative, but you don't always get the full, um, you don't get the full breadth of the conversations and all of the information. You guys have done a great job updating us. You have all the way along, I, I definitely agree with that. And it's got to be difficult, as you said, with this committee continuing to change every April. It's, it's a different group of people. And then the education, all those pieces have changed. And I continue to think of the number of times, just over this past winter, that we have heard about school choice. And that really resonates with me. And you look at your high school and you say, and I work in an elementary school, so I feel like I'm able to say this. It's your high school that's your flagship. It's your high school that is what sells houses in your community and, and brings people into your town. And it's, it's really what makes your name. And if we have opportunities at this high school that we really could be looking at, obviously costs considered, I really want to make sure we look at that and think about that. And if we have to sit on the money for East for a little while, even after the July first or August first date, then I think that would be valuable if we need that time to bring everybody together and just fully vet all the pros and cons of the mixed use or just the school use or leasing it back from somebody, you know, all the ideas that all of you have come up with and what we'll see in that final report. I think this is one time, and the decision is big enough, that everyone should really be around the same table at the same time.
Patrick?
You know, I think, I think cost is a big driver of whatever's going to happen with this building, you know, sort of moving forward and, you know, so that we, or the town, or all of us, really, the community have to decide, you know, is this better as a school building? Is this better as, you know, some other sort of mixed use building? What about a meeting between the School Committee and the Middle School East Reuse Committee? To see if you can kick around some ideas as to where you think the building should be moving forward? You know, that way there's not this, so there's no blind spots.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Joe.
And I, I agree with that concept.
But to, to me, to, if we were to meet tomorrow or next week, I still don't have, you know, the options and the, and the opportunities to, to advocate one way or another. So I, I, I think, you know, to Jen's point and your point, bringing, bringing these groups together would be very advantageous, and, and to the point of, we present what our options are as a district and, and, and hear feedback from the rest of the community on whether these are, these are an overall benefit to, to expanding programming, space, relocating some offices. But I, I just feel we need, I don't have enough, I, I keep repeating myself, I guess, but I don't have enough information at this time on what our, what our benefits would be. Costs, I understand, I mean, if it stayed as an educational facility right, right now, there's no added costs. You know, and then, then there's everything else. You know, whether it's slight costs, we talked about this a lo- one of the last couple of meetings, and, and your groups really evaluating, you know, the cost of changing the use or, or adding accessory uses or different things. So I just, I, I'm, I'm looking at it right now internally as a district, but, and, and after that, I agree with everything you, pretty much all of you have said.
I mean, it, it does need drastic renovations. I mean, the building's been on a shoestring budget because we knew it was coming offline. So it's, it's, needs substantial renovations, no matter what is, is done with it. Which is why, you know, that's why having paid all of these consultants.
Well, I, and I, I, I met with these consultants and the consensus is, it, to stay as is, it really doesn't need expensive renovations. It's, if you do something else, the, the costs go up drastically.
Right, I mean, we, we can't support the technology and the building we need right now. You know, we can't support the wireless, I mean, it needs to be rewired for internet. I mean, so there's, there are things that we haven't done that, that need to get done to continue that building moving forward as an educational facility. And I, I, I mean, that's, that's just true. Because I've been on the board when we've decided not to put certain money into that building, because it's coming offline, you know, and so we're not going to spend the, the money on it. I just, I think that the budget is, is a, a big part of the driver of it. We've paid consultants to figure out what's happening here, and I agree with you. Just take all the data points, you know, get all the data points. See if, what programs this Carrie need to do. I mean, all of this stuff needs to be brought together and discussed, you know, and all the data points need to be examined. I mean, I, I don't know, more information's always better than less, I think.
At this point, I'd like to move the meeting forward, if everybody's okay with it. The reason I, and I will leave this on the agenda, we'll leave this on as a, as an agenda item for every meeting, is that the reason for it was exactly this, to open up dialogue between all of us. And start getting, Jen makes a valid point, and no disrespect to you at all, Scott, but you're one voice on that committee, we're a seven-member committee. So this, this is good. We opened dialogue, everybody expressed their concerns, what they think we should do. We'll leave it on the agenda. Next time, you know, we'll do, you know, we'll have more discussion, and if we come to the point we think we need a subcommittee, we'll form a subcommittee. But at least we can have, you know, a dialogue on, 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 at, at meetings. Is everybody okay with that? Okay.
Mike, is there some sort of directive or anything to start researching what those options are to have Carrie looking into it?
I believe, Bob, you said you were going to?
Yeah, well, we'll, we'll get started on, it won't be necessarily a subcommittee or a school committee, but on our end, we hadn't really begun to think about innovative opportunities there, uh, as we could, they weren't formalized. So it would be having to sell or pitch an idea that would have to get buy-in. But we'll certainly, Carrie and I have tied ahead initial conversations, so we'll, we'll meet and talk about that, and get Craig involved and Kevin, of course, and, uh, go from there, and we'll report back.
Okay. Thank you. Next agenda item, reporter, the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction Assessment.
It's been a while since I've done a PowerPoint presentation, and over the last couple of months I've been begged and begged and pleaded. I, I would say multiple requests by the committee members, so I want to give the people what they want.
I think the request is actually to have your PowerPoint. Move from your computer, and we could save some money on the licensing.
So what, what we're going to talk about tonight is, um, a new program, uh, that we're looking at for Milford High School, and we're looking to pilot for the sixteen, seventeen school year called Early College High School. And what this program is, I'm going to have Carrie talk about it in a little more detail in a moment, is basically, we'll be partnering with, um, up to three higher ed institutions. And right now, we're in discussions with Framingham State University, Quintessigma Community College, and Mass Bay Community College, based on various program offerings. And the, the thrust of the program, why it's so appealing, is, um, the cost of college is skyrocketing. You know, if you're looking at a private institution, it's, you know, two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollars. Public institutions, a little less than that. And this is an opportunity for students to gain credits while they're, college credits while they're still in high school, go, going through the normal program of studies. And I'm going to turn it over to Carrie, so I'm going to jump into the PowerPoint presentation.
So, thank you, and I appreciate you having me here tonight to talk about this exciting opportunity. Kevin had begun this conversation, uh, with the folks he just mentioned last summer, and we have been having ongoing dialogue about how we can bring that into our high school for our students. So many advantages, um, to the program. Um, a lot of this is around college and career readiness, helping students to have a college experience while they're still in high school, that's a little bit different than the Advanced Placement Program. So our process is to collaborate with the, um, with the colleges and universities and determine what courses do we currently offer that may be aligned to what is referred to as the mass transfer block within the state university, um, and state college system. So we have, um, we have identified some courses that we think are a good fit, and we've submitted some information to our colleagues over at Framingham State University. And they're going to take a look at our curriculum maps and, um, see, see how tightly they're aligned and what, if anything, we might need to do with these courses in order to, um, be a match for this mass transfer block. Part of that process also is, um, the teachers being vetted through the process as well in order to be, um, highly qualified teachers. And all of our teachers are highly qualified, so I anticipate that process would be prob- quite smooth. It's more making sure that our curriculum maps are aligned to the colleges' curriculum maps. And so we may need to be, um, doing a little bit, a little bit of work there, but we have sent all this information over. Students right now, what, what happened this week is that we administered the Accuplacer to, um, fifty-one students this week. That is the first cohort that we rolled out. So we had, um, test administrators come over from Framingham State University to give the Accuplacer to our students. And I, if you're not familiar with the Accuplacer, it's an exam that all students who enroll at UMass or any of the state schools or any of the community colleges have to take. It's a requirement after you're accepted in order for the college to determine your English and math placement level. And so what we're doing, um, now for our rising seniors, that was the first, um, fifty-one students that we rolled out, we administered that, them, to them this week. And so what we will learn from this is for students who have, um, who pass it, they know already, well, you passed the Accuplacer, so where, if you're going to UMass, you're going to Worcester State or Framingham or Community College, um, you, you've already overcome that hurdle.
And what, and what, if I could jump in just for? What I love about this program is that, um, I've shared slides with, um, the committee several times about, um, college readiness of students just generally in Massachusetts. And what we found is somewhere between fifty and sixty percent of high school graduates across Massachusetts, remembering that Massachusetts is the highest performing public educational system in the United States, aren't ready for college-level ELA and math courses. And what happens is when students get into, um, college, they take these non-credit bearing courses. And at the community college level, if you have to enroll in non-credit bearing courses, the likelihood of you either getting a two-year degree or transferring onto a four-year school drops to below ten percent. So this pro- the reason we like this program too, is it meets the needs of students across kind of the spectrum. So giving the Accuplacer, and, and if this program kind of grows in the way we think it will grow, we see, you know, and we, and we've got to kind of work out some of the logistics. Do we do it at the end of the sophomore year, sometime during the junior year? We give it to all the students at Milford High School at some point in time during their high school career. And what it'll do is it'll then identify students who are ready to take college courses immediately, at whatever point that is in their high school career. But it'll also identify what some of the gaps and, um, challenges are for some students. And we can create bridge courses that not only prepare students for those college-level courses, but also would prepare students to take maybe the, um, high school, early college courses, maybe the following, the following school year, the second semester.
Right.
So, and, and there's a lot of programs within this, and there's a lot of opportunities here where students could maybe, you know, uh, Mike and I, you, you and I visited the Mass Bay Automotive Technician Program, which I think has some fantastic opportunities. But I wanted to also, and I got off track, but I wanted to also kind of de-jargonize this too, because Carrie's been using the term, um, mass transfer block. And the mass transfer block is basically your first two years of college general education requirements that most colleges and universities have across the country. It's nine credits, so basically three classes of behavioral and social sciences. Nine credits of humanities and fine arts, um, seven credits of natural or physical science. One of those courses being a lab-based course, that's why it's a four-credit course. English, composition writing, mathematics and quantitative reasoning. These are pretty general across any, you know, liberal arts university, college university you're going to see across, across the country, to be perfectly honest with you. And what we, what we like about this program, what's appealing about this program, is that with the AP program, which I'm a big proponent of, you take the course, at the end of the course, you take a test, you get a one through five on the test, based on your score and based on each college or university system or individual college or university's policies, you'll either get a waiver for credit, get credit for the course, or, or not get credit for the course based on how you score. With the Early College High School program, what we really like about it is that any student that gets a C or better will basically get that college credit, because it's the equivalent of a college course. And you'll get that transcript with these courses that will a hundred percent transfer across the UMass system at the two-year level, at the four-year level. But there are also courses that are generally transferable, even to private universities and colleges, because a number of students who start at UMass will transfer to, you know, Northeastern, or, you know, Pick Leslie, pick the private college university across the country. So we see a lot of potential benefits to this program. So, you know, it's possible for a student to get, you know, a semester, a year, two years done of college before they even leave. of college before they even leave, leave high school. And we've seen models of this at different places across the country.
Right.
So, I'm gonna.
So, and and I think too, you know, for students who are able to earn college credit while they're still in high school, it just, it builds the momentum. So, you're graduating from high school, you already have a, a half a year, maybe a year's worth of college credit under your belt already. And it really gets kids excited and moving and 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 saying, gee, I I can, I can do this. I I, I didn't think that that I could, but I I've achieved all these college credits while I'm still in high school. And I think that the confidence that that builds in students and it just propels them to keep at it and keep moving forward. So, I I think that's, that's just another huge benefit. So, for the students who just took the Accuplacer, once we get through the process, let's, let's take, for example, um, art history. If our art history course is vetted through the process and we we refine curriculum, if we need to make a couple changes here and there, we take care of that, and the teacher is vetted through the process, then those students who enroll in the art history class that's been approved will earn credits from us, um, which will be elective credits either um, in the history department or in the fine arts, and they will earn the college credits. And that will be by the end of next year. So, right now, we're we're still, um, I had sent another course over um, just today, our creative writing course, um, which is another one that we're looking at, but we've sent over about nine.
Correct. And and how we identify the students for this particular sitting of the Accuplacer, because I know that's a question that's gonna come up, is we based it on um, course enrollments for next year and choices that students have made. And based on that, we identified fifty-one students who fell into three courses that I think were probably most likely to pilot next year.
Right, exactly.
And as as it, as kind of demand increases or interest increases, I think we we may offer a couple more sittings of the Accuplacer even this year.
Yes, absolutely. So, uh, my hope is that we will have at least two more sittings of the Accuplacer. The test administrators can administer the exam to fifty students at a time in our two labs and the library, so um, so hopefully we'll have at least two more. Um, so, a- and again, this partnership, um, it's it's a partnership between the Department of Education and between the Department of Higher Ed, and they've, they've done a lot of work with um, industry and businesses and and um, talking about jobs of the future and and twenty-first century learning. And so, it's, it's truly a um, a solid partnership among all of us who work in education, both at the secondary and um, higher ed level, to prepare students for the twenty-first century and and what lies ahead. And starting that sooner than later, um, is certainly proving very beneficial to the students because there's been some research done on the retention rates at the college level for students who have participated in an early college high school program. And it far exceeds students um, who have not, I believe it's, it's a ninety percent retention rate, so that, that's just remarkable for students who have been.
So, there's a real interest in colleges and universities who get really killed for graduation rates.
Mm-hmm.
And um, you know, we talk about that all the time, but at the college level, it's, it's a, it's a real crisis. And, you know, retention rates as well. And this is, this is, this is a win for them too, and that's their interest in this game because it kind of connects. It it just leads to more success, basically.
Right. And I do believe it's also with the Coplex Scholarship that the state gives um, to qualifying students. Um, in addition to, uh, after a student qualifies for Coplex, they have to meet certain other criteria and um, eligibility. And um, participating in college courses while in high school is one of those. So, if the student participates in this program and earns the appropriate grade, um, that could be another qualifier. Right now, the Advanced Placement scores are a qualifier. There's different um, honor societies, Art Honor Society, Spanish Honor Society. So, there's a list of qualifiers to get the Coplex Scholarship, which is free tuition um, at UMass or any of the state schools. Um, and so, this too would then become another qualifier for a student. So, a student may have, maybe have one qualifying AP score, but maybe they took another AP exam or two and didn't get a qualifying score. But this could be the second qualifier to get them the tuition waiver for four years. So, another benefit, so, yeah. So, uh, so we're very excited about the program. We want to get as many students involved in this as we can. I think that um, this is going to reach a a sector of our student population that we may not be reaching with our Advanced Placement Program. I think it's going to um, have, have a a reach among the student body that's different than the Advanced Placement Program. And I think that that's a really good opportunity for our students. We have a lot of students who go to UMass. We have a lot of students that go to our state school system. Um, and whether or not they participate in the AP program, th- this is an an opportunity for them to have the college experience while they're still in high school. So, we're excited about it. We, uh, like I said, we're gonna have some more Accuplacer testing this year. Um, I've met with, when I met with the students about it the first time, at the end of last week, and I brought them into the library and I was explaining the program to them, they, they lit up. They were just so excited that they were gonna have this chance to earn some college credits and and not only to be in the program um, and and to have the benefits of the program and learn um, at that level, but financially, it is a huge savings for the students. Um, because if they earn the credit here in classes like marine science or creative writing or anatomy or art history, that is thousands and thousands of dollars of savings um, at the college level.
And it also has the potential for programs that, you know, are five-year or six-year engineering programs or, you know, masters and bachelor combination programs that students could potentially do in four years rather than five or six years. And and we just see, it's a curious point, we just see a broad appeal to this and a lot of opportunity to create programs that kind of meet specific student interests, that could even shift over time based on, you know, the actual interests of the students, which I think would be fantastic as well.
Right.
At this point, I I'd love to open it up for committee questions if they have any questions for us.
This is fantastic. Yeah, I mean, you touched on all the, all the advantages. It's gonna really impact the entire spectrum of students, and in particular, that that average student. And we do a lot of great things for our high achievers. Obviously, we do a lot of great things for um, you know, our special ed and ELL students. But the, the average student can really benefit from something like this. And you mentioned the cost savings. Um, the, i- it's gonna help with the transition into college. A lot, for a lot of kids, that's a big shock. Um, and and being able to, to actually um, take one of these classes in high school will certainly prepare them um, for that experience. I'm just curious, as part of that partnership with some of these schools, with Framingham State and Quintessignman, um, if there's a, if there's a, a class that they want to take that we don't offer here, are they able to take it at the school? So, if you have someone that's really ambitious that wants to take something crazy that we don't offer, are they able to do that through that partnership?
They absolutely are. And we, in fact, um, we have worded out to all our juniors and seniors, um, just, just over the last couple of weeks, that they could enroll at Framingham State um, at no cost and take a course right now. Um, so they can take it online or on campus, and the only expense to the student is the textbook. So, yes, that, because they have a grant, and that we are a partner school with them, and so our students are eligible for that. So, yes, they can do that.
So, I think it's, I, I love the idea of the program. I'm glad to hear that there's some core subjects, um, a- as much as I'm a fan of art history and having taken it myself. I, the first thing that came to my mind is this, oh, I hope we're not investing in this program for art history, so I'm glad to hear there's core projects as well. Uh, I understand it was a representative example. I just wanted to make sure. Um, I'm glad to hear about the core project. Uh, question I had, um, historically, and Framingham State is a, is a wonderful school. Um, historically, um, transferring of credits sometimes from Framingham to other schools or other schools into Framingham um, has historically been a challenge. And part of that has to do with the way that Framingham State actually counts their credits. Um, whereas most colleges, and for those who don't already know, most colleges, it's a three-credit class for each of, for each of your different subjects. Framingham is actually, they call them, they're, everything's four credits. So, very commonly, an ongoing issue that has happened in the past with Framingham State is students who transfer into Framingham State ultimately lose either a semester or a year, depending on what time in their college career they actually transfer in. Has that been addressed through this?
Yeah, so to avoid that is that, that mass transfer block.
Okay.
And and I think the UMass pro, system has really done a lot of work, and I'm no expert on the UMass system, but they've done a lot of work in the past few years to kind of, um, that's what I'm looking for, kind of, um, set kind of consistent expectations across campuses. And the way they've done that is through this mass transfer block. So, basically, the courses we'd offer through this program, whether it was credits through Mass Bay, Quintessignman Community College, or Framingham State, would all fall under this mass transfer block, which is almost the universal kind of coin of the realm, for lack of a better term. Uh, so that, so they would transfer flawlessly in the, in the UMass system. We couldn't necessarily guarantee that the credits would transfer anywhere else, like any private institution, but because they would fall into these gen ed requirements, like your, your, you know, your English classes, your math classes, your kind of general electives,
Mm-hmm.
science classes, that they're generally gonna be the classes that are much more likely to transfer. And um, we've worked with a number of folks from, that have worked at multiple campuses with the UMass system, and they generally say that when students transfer out, whether it's at the two-year level or the four-year level, the vast majority of these credits are accepted because they fall in that kind of gen ed requirement. So, we wouldn't offer like, you know, a four-hundred level medieval literature course because the likelihood of that transferring would be a lot less. It's just as an example. So, we're kind of looking at those first two years of gen ed requirements that tend to have the highest, the highest likelihood of transferability to private schools and a hundred percent transferability in the UMass system.
Great. Doctor, wasn't that the reason for the invention of the university system in Massachusetts, how you have Worcester State University to align all the schools so that students could move in and out of the schools without having that?
I think that was the initial, um, that was the vision, and I think we, each campus, it, I I think at the beginning was kind of a, its own little kingdom, and there were some issues of transferability across, but I think they've, they've addressed a lot of those issues. And I think one of those, one of the ways they did that was through that mass transfer block.
Okay.
Because, you know, and and generally, you do transfer within the first two years of college. It's, it's rare to do it. It's a, it's a little more rare to do it after that. It does happen, but it's a little more. But I think they've got significantly more consistency now than they've ever had in their history, is my understanding.
Okay. Any other member? Jen?
Just to echo, I think it's, it's really an amazing opportunity for our kids and for their families. And even, my kids are very young, and you start to think about the cost of college, and it's, it's so daunting. And if there are unorthodox ways of getting kids there and getting them started early, I think we should um, explore all of those opportunities and offer them. So, I really applaud you for all the work and that you've done to put this into place um, for our students. Uh, the one question that I had was, how do you compare the academic rigor between these classes and AP? Are, would you say they're about the same type of class, or might there be a different profile of student who might naturally go one direction or the other? Or, or are they all just college classes or college level?
Well, the, the Advanced Placement classes have to go through an audit of the college board, whereas these courses do not. So, when, when we roll out an Advanced Placement course, our teacher has to develop the curriculum, curriculum mapping and so forth. And we actually have to submit that for approval to the college board. And then the college board will, will work with our, vet that process with us and our teacher and to say, and approve it, and say, yes, this rises to an Advanced Placement course and hits all the benchmarks um, that we expect the course to. Whereas the college course is developed um, by the college, by the faculty, they are vetted through that process. The di- the difference here for us and and what will be new is that our course will be vetted through them so that our course will end up being their college course. So, any elements of our existing course will be um, refined to match the college course.
And and a lot of it too is through the lens that you look at it through, because the AP, I think the AP program is fantastic.
Right.
Um, but they're looking at it from the perspective of, we have these very high expectations that all colleges and universities should kind of, you know, and and a lot of them do. But then you look at how those AP courses and and test results are applied across colleges and universities, and there's, 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 there's a fair amount of variation.
Mm-hmm.
In in the curious point, you know, if you're looking at the lens of the college, they're already saying, this is a college-level course that's been vetted through, you know, the university, through the provost's office, through the dean's office. And so, we're giving you the college credit because it is, in fact, a college course.
Okay.
And and again, I think there's some semantics and, you know, it depends on where you're looking at it, how you would view one versus the other. And we're having a lot of internal debate on, you know, the rigor, the value of the AP versus, you know, the potential of early college right now. With a lot of our teachers who are currently teaching AP, who take great pride in kind of
Mm-hmm.
the courses that they're teaching and the results that they're getting for their students. So, there's, you know, it's not just, i- there's a lot of discussion going on around this that I think will be ongoing as we, as we start implementing courses.
Well, prob, like you said, over time. Once you've done this for the first time, you might have a better sense of.
Yeah, we'll have a better sense of it.
They might each have a, a home at the high school AP and and these.
It's, it's, it's very, it's very possible. Yeah, it's very possible.
Well, I think another thing that came out of our meeting at Mass Bay, Kevin, that was very interesting was that they, they stressed that quite a few students are not ready for college. So, the community college system gives them another two years to mature, to learn how to study, you know, better, but more importantly, it's affordable. So, if done right, they can come out with an associate's degree and possibly have no debt. So, now if they decide to go into the workforce with an associate's degree that's almost paid off or is paid off, that's great. And if they decide to go back school nights, that's one thing. Or if they opt at that point to go into a four-year college, they're gonna come out with only two years of debt, and they stress that. That's why they, and they push the community, and they do, Mass Bay, they really stress that very, very much.
And we were, we were having a conversation with um, a consultant working with Colin Coffey, who's done some presentations here at the high school, and it is fantastic. Uh, and and it made, I think, both Carrie and I think of it a little differently, but just, because she said, the degrees are all about credit accumulation. You know, you have to get it like, you know, say, a hundred and twenty credits. It's all about that. And however you get them, you know, the last place you kind of finish up is where that degree comes from. And it's really important to think about, how can we give our students here, the children of Milford, kind of a, a leg up? And I think this is a fantastic way to do that.
Absolutely. And and she was talking about scenarios where students um, go off to college and and they go for their first year, and they take all these courses on this transfer block, English and math and science, history, so forth. And the parents have spent, you know, fifty thousand dollars for that first year of college, and they've just, and they've taken all these courses. But then at the end of that first year, the student decides, you know what, I'm just not sure. I, I'm just not sure if I'm, I want to stay in college right now. I think I might want to take a year off, or I might want to do something different and 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 so forth. And what she was explaining to us is that these courses that the parents just paid the fifty thousand dollars for are the exact same courses on the mass transfer block that we can offer here at the high school. And so, the student graduates having all those credits under their belt and having had an experience that lends itself to their readiness, are you ready to go to college? Do you have the maturity? Are you committed? The, the benefits all the way around for the student's readiness, the parent's readiness to make that huge financial commitment, um, knowing and having faith that their student, their student really is ready, and and that fifty thousand dollars will be wisely invested in. It won't be six months into it or a year into it, the student either changes their mind, or maybe they don't finish. Maybe they get through till March and and then decide, it's not for me, and I'm going to come home, and then you lose those, those credits and the money. And so, it's um, we all know what a big financial investment colleges, so, um, for our parents. So, what we can do to prepare our students, to motivate them and engage them and get them excited about um, post-secondary success is, it's, it's just an awesome opportunity for the students here. And this also will lend itself to our academies that we've been talking about as well, because these partnerships will bring in the experts. So, we can bring in the college professors and people in industry to talk about with our, if we have a STEM academy, to come in and and present to our students about college admissions and STEM and and so forth, so.
Do we need to take a vote on this this evening? Is there, are we looking for a vote on this, or are we?
No, just kind of a presentation, just an informational presentation is kind of what we're up to with the high school.
You're always up to good things.
I just wanted to make sure. I wasn't sure if it was a program that you were looking for approval on from us. That's, I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you.
Any other member? Well, thank you very much.
Excellent work on that.
Thank you.
Yeah, very nice.
And I just want to take a moment to thank um, Mr. Walsh, because we had our Athletics and Activities Fair on Monday night, and um, it was amazing out, um, out pouring of support from the eighth-grade students and families. We had, the, the cafeteria was just packed, and we had all about eighty, ninety student activities and athletics and so forth. So, we had everything rolling, we was getting it all ready, and then we realized we didn't have the helium for the fifty, sixty balloons that we had bought. And Mr. Walsh came through for us because um, at Imperial, they have helium in one of the bedrooms, so.
We have a lot of hot air.
So, I just wanted to thank Mr. Walsh and the boosters. Um, they, they were great. They bought all the decorations and our hospitality and tourism students decorated. And all our faculty and staff and coaches and Coach Boucher, e- everyone was there. It was just awesome. So, I just wanted to, to let you all know that and and to say thank you to everyone that helped us make that evening.
As I said earlier, you call me anytime.
Thank you very much, Mr. Walsh. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Next agenda item is reported, the Assistant Superintendent for Business and Human Resources.
My guess for the committee's approval, the six, I have six warrants for their approval. The first warrant is in the amount of two hundred twenty-one thousand, three hundred forty dollars and five cents.
Motion from John, second by Jen, all in favor.
The second warrant is in the amount of one hundred six thousand, five hundred fifty-two dollars and sixty-four cents.
Motion by Patrick, second from Scott, all in favor.
The third warrant is in the amount of nineteen thousand, seven hundred forty-six dollars and four cents.
Motion by Joe, second by Patrick, all in favor.
The fourth warrant is in the amount of twenty-seven thousand, two hundred forty-eight dollars and eighty cents.
Motion from Scott, second by Jen, all in favor.
The fifth warrant is in the amount of five hundred thirty-one thousand, two hundred twenty-four dollars and seventy cents.
Motion from John, second by Scott, all in favor. Motion from John, second by Scott, all in favor.
And the last warrant is in the amount of $6,372.80.
Motion from Jen, second by Patrick, all in favor.
The committee does have a financial statement update, as we discussed in our previous budget meeting. We also have, or the committee also has a list of the latest appointments and hires from our previous meeting. The committee also has two requests for an out-of-state approvals. The first one is from the Woodland School for Allison Salvucci to attend the Providence Museum of Natural History for her grade-four class. There will be, well, it's for grade four. There are 112 students attending, and this does require a vote as it is out of state.
Okay. Any discussion? Any motion? Scott, Jen, all in favor?
There is a second request for out-of-state travel. It is for the Hotel and Hospitality Tourism Program to attend the convention arena at Mohegan Sun to view their food and beverage rooms on, on April 29th. This is also out-of-state travel.
Yes. Any discussion? Motion? Scott, second from Patrick, all in favor? Any one-armed bandits?
There are gifts this evening, Mr. Chair.
Are you going on that trip, Mrs. Perry?
Uh, no, I am not. They didn't need any chaperones for that trip, funny.
We're going to balance the school budget.
We'd lose.
We're going to go for broke.
So this evening, we do, we have three gifts. Do you want to read them all and take one vote?
Sure, that's fine.
So the first gift is from Shaw's Supermarket. It's for the athletic department. A proposed gift for the hockey team donation, $500, very generous. A Holliston Pediatric Group gift-in-kind for the Stacy School, a microscope. And Tran Redemption Center Corp. for the family network, it looks like family network gift, contract services and supplies, $50. Any discussion? Can I have a motion from Joe, second from John, all in favor? Okay. Yeah, very nice. And we'll send the letters as we always do.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, subcommittee updates. First one on the list is policy.
Our next meeting is Tuesday, I believe. So we'll have another update. So Patrick has one more meeting.
And the next is wellness, and we meet on the 30th of March, if I'm mistaken.
I think that's right, yeah.
Yeah, it's the 30th.
30th.
Yeah, 30th. So no update there, middle school East reuse?
Our next meeting is April 6th.
Okay. Wooden School Building Committee?
Uh, we haven't, actually, we met last night, but I was unavailable to meet last night. I don't know if Bob was in attendance.
I, I was, yeah. So up until now, we've been reporting that the project is on budget and on time. And tonight, I want to report that the project, as I understand it from last night's meeting, is on budget and four days ahead of time. Four days ahead of schedule. So we're moving well there. And I would just defer to the committee, if you want to give an update about the actual tour you did on this past Saturday. I was not a part of that recent tour, but I'm sure that...
I guess the easiest way to, to, to express it to the community is it's over the top. I think I said that many times, Mr. Consigli, did I not? You, you, you have to get into that building when it's finished and see it. It's just an educational palace, in my opinion. Some of the ideas, it, it really is, some of the ideas, I think, are great. There's administration on every floor. So the principals on the first floor, vice principal on the second floor, vice principal on the third floor. You know, the gymnasium, the wellness room. It's a, it's a big building. It's a big building. You know, the safety, the way the office is laid out, how you have to get buzzed into the building. You talked about the glass in the back of the building, the safety glass in the back of the building. I can't get over how big the playground is. It's going to be, I should say. But just the general layout of the rooms, I think, you know, you have a classroom on one side, classroom, and then two smaller rooms on either side that have windows that look into the main classroom. So you can take students and work on a separate project if you wanted to, but they're still part of the main classroom. The inside colors and, and, you know, what is it, the fir, the third floor is the clouds. Second floor is earth.
Tree candy.
And then the bottom floor is the earth. And so the tiles are all laid out that way. And then you're, around the cafeteria, there's tile work done that looks like a piano, one that looks like a guitar. I mean, the thought process is just, it, it, it's over the top. When it's done, as a community member, you need to get into it. It's something to be very proud of, Patrick, you and your committee, Aldo, Jonathan, you know, Craig, I know you've been heavily involved in it, and Bob, you know. I don't know if you want to comment on it, Craig, feel comfortable coming up to the table, but it's really something to see. It really is. How, yeah, come on up and just give us, sure. How many feet long is it, Craig?
500 feet. 500 feet, 49 feet high, that's the tallest spots, so it's incredible. It really is. So I was in today, and they're starting, they're starting to put in some of the lights on the upper floor, which just adds a different dynamic to it. I also saw some of the tile work on the floor. So there's nine different colors on the walls, but the tile on the floor matches certain colors on the walls. So it, I don't know. It's like you said, it's amazing.
Well, I think a couple of things that, that too is the cafeteria.
Yep.
And when I asked Aldo why, and he said to me, well, the state of Massachusetts won't reimburse for an auditorium or any school that has an auditorium.
Yeah, at the elementary level, right.
No slope floors. That was the first thing they said to us, no slope floors.
Yeah, so they said, well, you know what, we'll build a cafeteria. That's as big as an auditorium, to be very honest with you. And the stage has got all the modern technology, you know, in it. But also the natural lighting, that's what I was impressed with, is the lighting that coming through the roof in certain areas of the school is actually on the bottom floor. Comes right through it, you know? And then the, the, the areas where they, they did the paintings.
All the way up.
You kind of got to figure it out, you know, you got to, but it, there are trees. Literally trees going from the ground floor all the way up to the, the top floor. Just a lot of thought went into it, really. Really did.
Right. And I did, like you said before, we can feel comfortable letting kids go basically anywhere, and you can, you have eyes on them from any space, which is great.
Yeah.
To promote the independence that they need is, is, I think, great.
Yeah. And I said Saturday, and I sincerely mean this to the members of the community, we should be so proud. We have the Fields Projects, we have the U Center that's almost done now, and wait till you get inside of that. That's another project that's over the top. And the Wooden School. And I'm just telling, if you, you're not proud to live in this town when you see these three projects. You know, the school to its completion, wow. I mean, and I, and I made a remark, this is a long way from back when I was in school. All central air conditioning? So they know now they'll move all the summer programs to that school, because it's HVAC, it's all central air. So it's better for the kids, better for the people that run in the programs. It's just, just over the top. That's all I can say, so.
Mike, or Craig, or, or Patrick, any of you, do you know, when are we going to be able to open it up to the public? Are we going to be able to do that before we move everything in there, or not till the fall?
Yeah.
With the moving schedule, I think, it's going to be awful tough, waiting for school starts.
So that's, that's the part that's tight. So, you know, we're four days on, like Bob said, we're four days prior to when they say we were going to get it. But that's the end of July. But then once we get the keys to the building, you have to set the furniture up. You know, things like that, that we, we can't even be in there for. So by the time teachers get in there, we're probably mid-August anyways.
Yeah.
So I don't think, I don't know, I just don't know when, when we're going to be able to get people in there, to be honest with you.
At the school starts, probably.
Yeah.
You know. It would be awesome to tour the building before.
Right.
You know, the kids are in, it really would.
Well, do you think the kids will have a chance to, to walk through before the year's over? Or is that, will, will that not be possible with construction?
I don't know.
You don't know yet?
Yeah.
Well, we don't. I, I, I actually asked that question.
What are you doing?
Two other members of the building with me. We won't be able to, it's not our building. We don't own it.
Right.
It is, which is, sounds kind of crazy.
Because we're going to get the occupancy for it?
Yeah, we don't have the occupancy.
Same thing, it's not, it's not our building.
Yeah, we don't actually own the building.
Right.
Which sounds kind of crazy, because we're spending a million dollars a week, I think, at this point, on that project. But I actually asked that and said, you know, is there going to be any availability for some of this to happen? And they said, actually, there, it's an active construction zone. You can't have, and we wouldn't be able to allow, allowed to have children in it, because it's actually not our building. We don't own it. Until we take occupancy of it, we're not actually allowed to have, because you're not supposed to have anybody in there. Right now, we're sort of, I don't want to say breaking the rules, but we're bending the rules by having members of the committee and everything else go in there as community members. But, yeah, for students at this point. And I, I mean, as you guys have, I don't know who went, but when you go in there right now, I mean, they, they, they vest you up and helmet you up and everything else, and safety glasses and everything, so.
I, I think also, Craig, and you would agree to this, and not to be taken, you know, this is a compliment to Aldo and to Jonathan. As you're walking through, it's almost like they're writing the checks for things that are being done. And, and they're, they're talking and they're telling you, you know, this was originally going to be this, but we did this over here. Yeah, it's like this, they're writing the check, and that's, you know, to have those two people doing that, you know, running that project for us, we're blessed.
Very knowledgeable.
Yeah.
It's incredible.
Let it down.
Yeah.
If I was...
Yeah, very, very much so.
You and I talked about this at the beginning, Mike, if you were ever going to entrust to put a penny between two people and have them draw it out into thin copper wire, it's Aldo and Jonathan.
Yeah.
They are going to absolutely make the best of every single penny that's spent on that project, so.
So.
Congratulations, Ted, but...
Thank you, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Technology Task Force?
No update, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Climate, culture, and morale?
We, the, the two task force that were established, the Facilities Task Force and the Discipline Task Force, met on Tuesday for the first time. Had, started some good dialogue and some good conversation around both. I think the big thing is, is communication and making sure that all the, that everyone's talking through some of the, the issues that, that we're seeing out there. And then from a discipline perspective, the other hot topic was, was visibility. And how do we ensure that the administrators are out there, they're walking the halls, that they're visible, that they're interacting with the kids? So a lot more to come, but I think they were both very positive discussions. And we'll continue to have those meetings over the next few months.
Can you touch just a little bit, Joe, more on the, the discipline? Have we had a conversation with Mr. Toki and Lenny Oliveri and some of their ideas that they, they had as far as mentoring?
Um, so we, there are a number of retired educators out there today that are willing to lend their expertise to us, and they want to be involved. And, and, you know, they obviously have a lot of experience, and I think they could really help guide, guide us going forward. So one of the things that we're talking about is perhaps leveraging and tapping into that and bringing some of those people in to, to offer some insight, so.
Right. Thank you, thank you. Okay, next agenda item, school liaison updates. I'm at Memorial tomorrow, so, okay. All right, future agenda items?
Um, Mr. Chair, for a, a meeting in the future, and I, we'll get a direction from a timeline perspective. I'd like to have added to the agenda a discussion around the possibility of honorary diplomas and the awarding of honorary diplomas. And that'll probably be a, probably in the late May meeting, if we can, if, would be my, would be my ask.
Okay. Anybody else? Any old business? Any motion for adjournment? John, second from Jen, and with that, Pat, all in favor? And with that, Patrick, I say, good luck.
Thank you, Mike.
And thank you for your six years of service to the town of Milford. All right. Good night, Happy St. Patrick's Day again.